I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we ask Pastor Greg Morse to come up, we do want to acknowledge that today is Indigenous Peoples' Day and acknowledge the deep history and culture of the eastern shore and to please acknowledge that and to celebrate that in your own fashion. Pastor Greg Morse, we invite you up to give the city invocation.
Thank you again for the opportunity to participate. This past Saturday here in our fair city, I was privileged to serve as the co-host of an ecumenical event, Peace Road Salisbury. We gathered at Unity Square to promote world peace. Dr. Andrew Carden and Beth from Beth Israel Synagogue addressed the crowd through writing, as it was the Jewish High Holy Day, Yom Kippur, Day of Atonement. We were addressed in person by Imam Ashrif Ahmed of the Islamic community. Pastor John Harrison of our community was the emcee of this event. There were many other dignitaries from a variety of spiritual backgrounds that came to participate, and I was able to address the crowd as a representative of our Christian community, all of us vying for peace and praying for peace in our world. It's a wonderful thing when with inclusion, people of faith would participate in this simple but important time of prayer, opening up these proceedings with an invocation. So I, along with our president and our city council members and city employees, we invite you to join me and other city leaders and spiritual leaders to pray for our city. This week, in the coming weeks, you may be contacted by deputy city clerk Hannah Long about your participation, so don't hesitate to do that. It's always a privilege to serve in this simple yet profound capacity of praying the invocation. So now let us pray. Our great Creator and Sustainer of life, we come before you in humility and intimitity, recognizing our insignificance without you. Henceforth, we call upon you tonight for wisdom, for strength, for imagination and creativity as we address the issues of the agenda and the issues of our day. Thank you, God, for those who have been slated by the electoral process to serve our great city. It's because of your sovereign hand that we have been given these opportunities. You are truly our benefactor. With you, nothing can stand in our way, and without you, we are but a shell of accomplishment and achievement. So give to those who lead our city health and wealth according to the promise in 3rd John 1 and 2. I pray that you may prosper in all things and be in health just as your souls prosper. We pray for those who have suffered great loss in our nation due to the two recent storms of Helene and Milton. We are blessed to live in a region where our lives are rarely, if ever, impacted with this kind of devastation. So bless those in leadership as they endeavor to restore some semblance of normal living and give comfort to those who have lost more than material things, for they have experienced the loss of precious life. Somehow, God extend our hands and our feet to the needs that are around us, multiply our efforts, strengthen our resolve, enable our initiatives as we align ourselves to your principles and to your ways. May our morality and ethics rise to the occasion that is before us, and in so doing, allow us to see the rewards and the results of such dedication to those things that are spiritual. Grant our great city your favor, oh Lord, favor through protection, favor through provision, favor through principle, and favor through pardon, and favor through our praise of fellow humanity. We ask these things because you have the ability to give them. Bless this meeting, we ask, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Morse. And as Pastor Morse echoed, we want to make sure that since we are a city of many who believe differently and think differently and pray differently, we want to ensure that we are extending that offer to many, to different sectors. So thank you, Pastor Morse, for echoing that. And again, you'll be hearing from our deputy clerk, but also if you know of anyone who would be interested in giving the invocation, please do contact the clerk's office. This time, we'll have a few presentations from the council and from the mayor's office.
All right. We have a proclamation, the City of Salisbury today, for Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the City of Salisbury is committed to ensuring the safety and security of its citizens, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, with homes being the location in which our citizens are greatest risk. And whereas home fires killed more than 2,150 people in the United States in 2023, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 358,000 home fires. And whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, where fire departments responded more than 170,000 annually, times annually, between 2018 and 2023. And whereas two out of every five house fires start in the kitchen, with over 30% of these fires resulting from unattended cooking and more than half reported non-fatal home cooking, fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fire themselves. And whereas the City of Salisbury residents should turn pot handles towards the back of the stove, always keep a lid nearby when cooking, keep a three-foot kid-free zone around the stove and other things that could be hot, watch while they are hot, and set a timer to remind them that they're currently cooking. And whereas citizens who have prepared and practiced a home fire escape plan are better prepared and therefore more likely to survive a home fire, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in a reported home fire in half, and whereas the City of Salisbury's firefighters are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries throughout, through prevention and protection education, and the city's residents have been receptive to community risk reduction efforts and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme is "Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You" effectively serves to remind us that stay alert and make sure we have working smoke alarms in our homes. And now therefore, I Randolph J. Taylor, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim October 6 through 12, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week.
The same sentiments from the city council.
Yeah, we'll spare you all. Get a quick picture behind.
Justice, Andy, do you want?
And as they're taking their seat, again, if you haven't seen it, please look at their Facebook page. You can see all the wonderful work that the crew over at SFD does during Fire Prevention Week, but specifically Mr. Bridges, Zach Bridges, and that's your initiative. So we thank you for going to our schools and making sure that you make fire prevention as fun as it can be for our students. Thank you.
All right, second proclamation for, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Mayor, we had to put a plug in.
I didn't mean to cut you off, sir.
Thank you from every school teacher in Wycomica County. As a retired school teacher, the highlight of October were when the kids could go outside and the welcoming firemen explain the entire truck and everything to them. Thank you for that, because that is a big undertaking.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we have a proclamation for National Code Compliance Month. Whereas code enforcement officers provide for safety and welfare of the citizens throughout the United States through the enforcement of local codes and ordinances facing various issues of building, zoning, housing, animal control, environmental health, and life safety. And whereas code enforcement often have a challenging and demanding role and often do not receive recognition for the job that they do in improving living and working conditions for residents and businesses of local communities. And whereas code enforcement officers are dedicated and highly qualified professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing, ensuring safety and preserving property values through the knowledge and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance codes and ordinance. And whereas code enforcement officers often have a highly visible and interactive role in the communities while providing quality customer service excellence to the communities in which they serve. And whereas code enforcement officers are called upon to provide quality customer service and excellence to the residents and businesses of the communities in which they serve. And whereas the City of Salisbury wants to recognize and honor code enforcement officers and professionals all across the United States and bring awareness to the importance of code enforcement in the communities of the United States. And now therefore, I Randolph J. Taylor, Mayor of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim October 2024 as National Code Compliance Month.
All right, we will present and adopt the agenda. On today's agenda, we have the consent agenda, and again, we are going to strike Resolution 3366 from the consent agenda. We have a few award of bids, dump truck, citywide concrete placement, automated speed enforcement system, capital lease master agreement, genie boom lift. We have declaration of surplus from the fire department, police department, and Department of Water Works. We will have a public hearing, ordinance 2881, the second reading authorized the operation of a cannabis dispensary. We have ordinances. We have ordinances 2891 for the Maryland City Arts Council, ordinance 2892 for approving the budget amendment for the fire department's operating budget, ordinance 2893 for new fees to the fiscal year 2025, ordinance 2894, budget amendment for the parking fund budget, ordinance 2895 for the city code to clarify which city personnel are authorized to act as enforcement officers, and 2896, budget amendment for the Blue Heron Agility Association of Delaware in the amount of $4,000. I will entertain a motion to amend the legislative agenda to strike Resolution 3366.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Did she? Okay. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, so moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Y'all can't hear me?
Now we can hear you, yes. Thank you. All right, and the chair votes aye. Thank you. And again, we just want to preface that the person for Resolution 3366 has decided to volunteer in another capacity. All right. At this time, we will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
City clerk?
So that leaves, that leaves one thing on the consent agenda. That would be Resolution number 3367, and that is to appoint Juan Zelaya to the Human Rights Advisory Committee for term ending October 2026.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Is Juan Zelaya here? Oh, wonderful. Mr. Zelaya, we want to appreciate you for joining the Human Rights Advisory Committee, and we can't wait to see the work that you'll do. So a quick round of applause for you. Thank you. I always tout, that's where I started my service with the city and volunteering was at the Human Rights Advisory Committee, so thank you again and can't wait to see the work you'll do. All right. This time, we will invite city procurement director Jennifer Miller to the podium. Ms. Miller?
Good evening, Council.
I will entertain a motion to approve the award of bids and declaration of surplus.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Miller, always good to see you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, the first item this evening is invitation to bid number ITB 25-105. This is a dump truck with front plow and spreader for the Department of Field Operations. This is a 2026 International HV507 SFA conventional cab truck with dump body, front plow, and salt spreader. We'd like to utilize a cooperative contract, a Sourcewell Contract 032824-NVS. This is a contract for the Class 4 through 8 chassis and cabs with related equipment, accessories, and services. The vendor on this contract is International Delmarva. They are in Salisbury, Maryland. The total cost of this particular piece of equipment is $323,482. The account noted in your packet is fully funded for that purchase. Per City of Salisbury Charter SC 16-3, General Policy of Competitive Bidding Exceptions states that competitive bidding is not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstances. That's for contracts in which the city receives a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity pursuant to a valid contract. So as a service cooperative, Sourcewell is a local government unit, public corporation, and public agency pursuant to the Minnesota Constitution and Enabling Law, Minnesota Statute S, excuse me, Section 123A, Point 21. The City of Salisbury is a participating agency, account number 2425. Next item is invitation to bid, ITB number A25-103. This is for citywide concrete placement and repair. It's not specific to one particular department, but this is for all labor, materials, and equipment for the demolition, installation, and repair of various concrete work throughout the city, such as your curbs, gutters, and sidewalks. We posted the bid on July 14, opened the bid on August 15. Total responsive and responsible bids received, we actually received seven. The vendor to be awarded under this contract would be INL Construction out of Oxon Hill, Maryland. The total amount that you see in your packet of $283,840 is just what we call a base bid amount. It's usually used to establish a master price agreement. This is in agreement with about 42 various line items of various curb, gutter, sidewalk, removal, installation, so on and so forth. The accounts noted in your packet are what are traditionally used for that work, but again, it's a citywide contract. This award would be an indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity contract, so therefore the services provided to the city will be that of an on-call nature. No minimum purchase is implied or guaranteed, so we issue purchase orders on an as-needed basis. This contract does include a renewal clause wherein we reserve, the city reserves the right to renew all or portions of this contract with the same prices, terms, and conditions as the original contract for up to two one-year terms contingent upon mutual agreement between the city and the vendor. The next item is invitation to bid number A-25-109. This is the Automated Speed Enforcement System for the Salisbury Police Department. This contract will provide for the labor, materials, equipment, supervision, service, and incidental items necessary to install, test, and maintain an automated speed enforcement system. Here again, we'd like to use a cooperative contract from Calvert County Government in Prince Frederick, Maryland. The vendor is Ultimate from Lanham, Maryland. The contract date here was June 28, 2024. The cost for the units would be $3,499 per unit, and we have six total units per month, plus any registration fees, any registration lookup fees over 250 per unit per month. The account noted in your packet is the expense account for speed camera administration, and the General Policy of Competitive Bidding Exceptions, as noted in your packet, is the one that I did read previously.
Ms. Miller, are these, so I know again, it says necessary to install, test, and maintain an automated speed enforcement system. Are these just for the hardware that we already have? You said that we have six already. This is just to continue the function of the six that we have in the city?
Correct.
Okay.
I think we're pretty confident we can make it back just on Mrs. Blake alone. We're not sure, but.
Moving forward. Moving forward.
Don't worry, I paid in my share as well.
Yes.
Could be possible.
I give mine to our nation's capital. Ms. Miller?
Yep, the next one is RFP, Request for Proposal, number A-25-105. This is a capital lease master agreement for the Department of Finance. This is for a master lease that allows the city to finance acquisitions to be initiated at any time over the term of the agreement. So there are certain things that we budget for rather than paying outright for, we lease those items. There are three items in this year's budget, total of about, oh, did I list them here? About $920,000 in the FY '25 budget. So when we did this bid, we put it out publicly back in July. We did get a response in August. We got a response from Bank Funding LLC. It's the same firm that we contracted with on the last cycle. Usually, we look to establish this agreement for a multi-year term, like a three-year term. So this was, we were at the end of the contract cycle, we put out a new request for proposal. The rate appeared higher than what we would have liked. So in conjunction with the Department of Finance, we did try to do some due diligence here and got a much better rate from Bank of America. In your packet, you'll see some descriptive information, a nice memo on the difference in those rates. The rate that we're looking at from Bank of America is 3.3949% over the course of seven years. And again, in your packet, it does mention what that savings amount would be over the course of those three years. The bank, the rate that was given to us by Bank Funding was over 4%. And because we were on, you know, we're on a relatively short timeline to get this financing in place, we sort of had to act quickly as opposed to resoliciting for this. So we feel like we did do the due diligence. We would like to make this contract award under SC 16-3, Point B, General Policy of Competitive Bidding Exceptions, which states, "Contracts shall be let to the lowest evaluated and best bid in the case of purchases, or the highest and best bid in case of sales, except that the city in every instance shall reserve the right to reject any and all bids, waive any irregularities, and make the award in the best interest of the city." Salisbury Municipal Code 2.32.050, Procedure for Competitive Bidding F states fixing of terms, conditions, and specifications of bidding states, "In every instance, the city shall reserve the right to reject any bids, waive any irregularities, and make the award in the best interest of the city." So we are asking that we would reject the bid to Bank Funding of America and proceed to contract, I'm sorry, with Bank Funding and then proceed to contract with Bank of America.
Did you see that here? Roughly $50,000 savings in going with this. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Okay, the next item is invitation to bid number ITB 24-120. This is a genie boom lift for the wastewater treatment plant. This is a genie Z-25 boom lift. Here again, we'd like to use a cooperative contract, Sourcewell Contract 062320-URI. The vendor here is United, excuse me, United Rentals from Stanford, Connecticut. The cost for this item is $106,946. The account that's noted in your packet are the accounts that are funded for this particular purchase, and I did mention the General Policy of Competitive Bidding Exceptions again in your packet.
Thank you. Council, any questions on the above award of bids?
None.
Councilman Jackson?
None.
Okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor of the above award of bids and declaration, of the above award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Move forward to the declaration of surplus.
Yes, very good, okay. All right, the first couple items are from the Salisbury Fire Department. This is extrication equipment and a boat motor. We intend to utilize a method of disposition as a public auction, but if for some reason not saleable, we would look to abandon, destroy, scrap, or otherwise dispose of said items. All the information is, as well as in your packets, giving detailed information about the items. The next items are for the Salisbury Police Department. There are nine total vehicles. I believe on the packet from the department, it might have said eight, but it is a total of nine vehicles. And then various handguns and ammunition. For the method of disposal here, for the vehicles, we would look to sell these at public auction. And then for the handguns and ammunition, we would look to first offer them to sale to the caring officer, and then look to trade them back or through, for a credit for a future purchase. Oh, the last item, sorry. Department of Water Works, they have a 2004 mobile office trailer. It's in very poor condition, really isn't something that can be sold. It leaks, so the idea is that this would be disposed of. We have a quote then to bring a mobile office trailer that's on the Department of Field Operations site, bring that over to the wastewater treatment plant so that they have a building.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Council, any questions?
None. No.
All right, all those in favor of the declaration, the above declaration of surplus, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
All right, this time, we'll move forward to our public hearing on ordinance number 2881. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2881 for reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Bush.
Good evening, Council. Please bear with me as I continue to deteriorate by the minute over here.
Thank you.
Okay, this is an ordinance permit referred to as ordinance number 2881, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the operation of a cannabis dispensary at 733 South Salisbury Boulevard in the General Commercial District as required by Section 1736040 of the Salisbury Municipal Code. Whereas Elevated Mind and Wellness LLC has submitted a request in accordance with the provisions of Section 17.36.040 of Title 17, zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code to operate a cannabis dispensary in an existing commercial retail building located at 733 South Salisbury Boulevard and the General Commercial Zoning District. And whereas Mayor and Council may grant an ordinance permit for certain uses as specifically listed in Title 17, zoning of the code, particularly Section 17.36.040, and City Council Section And whereas the Salisbury Planning Commission reviewed the request for an ordinance permit at its June 20, 2024 meeting and gave a favorable recommendation to Mayor and Council on the request to establish the cannabis dispensary as authorized by the State of Maryland Regulations. And whereas City Council has determined that based upon a review of all materials presented, the request should be granted pursuant to Section 1736040 of Title 17, zoning of the code. It is now before you for a public hearing.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak during the public hearing, please stand and be sworn in by the The time is now 6:31, and I do open the public hearing. The time is now 6:31, and I do open the public hearing. Time is 6:31, and the public hearing is now closed. All those in favor to approve ordinance number 2881 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And hearing unopposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2891 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2891, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Maryland State Art Council for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $41,002, and to appropriate a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for expenses associated with the Maryland Folk Festival. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments.
All those in favor, ordinance number 2891, please signify by saying aye.
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 Hearing unopposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2892 for first reading.
So moved. Second.
Ordinance number 2892, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2025 general fund budget to appropriate funds to the Salisbury Fire Department's operating budget. Whereas the city has declared 35 Motorola APX 6000 Series portable radios a surplus, and whereas the radios have been sold at auction per city procurement guidelines. And whereas the city has received a total of $16,927.50 from the proceeds generated from the auction sale, and has placed those funds in the city general fund. And whereas the fire department has used for the funds received and requests that the funds totaling $16,927.50 be reallocated to the fire department operating budget for FY 2025. And whereas this budget amendment must be provided upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of counsel. Section 1 of ordinance 2892 reads, "The City of Salisbury's fiscal year 2025 general fund budget being hereby amended as follows. A, increase the sale of fixed assets account 01000469200 by $16,927.50, and increase the Salisbury Fire Department's building account, which is 24035534301, by that same amount, which is $16,927.50."
All those in favor, ordinance number 2892, please signify by saying aye.
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 Hearing unopposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2893 for first reading.
So moved. Second.
Ordinance number 2893, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to add new fees for FY 2025 and thereafter unless and until subsequently revised or changed. Whereas the FY 2025 fee schedule shall be amended by adding new and additional fees set forth in Exhibit 1. And whereas the city is adding new fees to be charged by field operations associated with rental rates for the Salisbury Zoo. And whereas the city is adding a fee to be charged by the Department of Infrastructure and Development for a two-year extension of an approved development plan. And whereas the fees set forth in Exhibit 1 shall be charged and otherwise assessed by the city for fiscal year 2025 and thereafter unless and until subsequently revised or changed. Section 1 of ordinance 2893 reads, "The fee amounts set forth in Exhibit 1 are hereby adopted by the council of the city and shall be charged and otherwise assessed by the city for FY 2025 and thereafter unless and until subsequently revised or changed." And if I can direct your attention to Exhibit 1, that outlines the fee schedule, and you can see the missed fees that are added regarding the Salisbury Zoo, as well as the building fees by the Department of Infrastructure and Development.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2893, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing unopposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2894 for first reading.
So moved. Second.
Ordinance number 2894, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2025 general fund budget and parking fund budget, and authorizing the mayor to amend the authorized positions included in the FY 25 general fund budget and parking fund budget. Whereas during the course of the past few months, the city executives have been assessing and formulating position and grade changes that will be of a benefit to the city. And whereas the city has determined the need to reorganize several positions and to revise the authorized position counts in several departments. And whereas the city has determined that there is a need to change pay grades assigned to several positions. And whereas the City of Salisbury has determined that no additional funding is required to make the update. And whereas to effectuate these aforementioned changes, the position appropriations set forth below must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of counsel. Section 1 of ordinance 2894 reads, "The City of Salisbury's FY 25 authorized position budget being hereby amended as follows." And you can see that chart that is included in your agenda, they are setting forth those changes.
Thank you. All those in favor of ordinance number 2894, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing unopposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2895 for first reading.
So moved. Second.
Ordinance number 2895, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury amending Subchapter 10.04.040 entitled Enforcement Officers of the Salisbury City Code to clarify which city personnel are authorized to act as, quote, "enforcement officers," end quote. Whereas the ongoing application, administration, and enforcement of the city code demonstrates a need for its periodic review, evaluation, and amendment in order to comply with present community standards and values and to promote the public safety, health, and welfare of the citizens of the city. Whereas Mayor and Counsel of Salisbury are authorized by Maryland Code Local Government Article Section 5-202 to adopt such ordinances not contrary to the Constitution of Maryland, public general law, or public local law, as Mayor and Counsel deem necessary to assure the good government of the municipality, to preserve peace and order, to secure persons and property from damage and destruction, and to protect the health, comfort, and convenience of the citizens of the city. Whereas Mayor and Counsel may amend the city code pursuant to the authority granted in SC 2-15 of the city charter. And whereas Mayor and Counsel find that amendments to Subchapter 10.04.040 of the Salisbury Code are desirable to update the code to clarify which city personnel are authorized to act as enforcement officers. And whereas Mayor and Counsel have determined that the amendments to Subchapter 10.04.040 of the city code shall, as set forth below, shall be adopted as set forth herein. Section 1 of ordinance 2895 reads, and what we're doing is adding language and striking language. The language being added is bolded and underlined, and the language that's being removed is struck through. Section 1, Subchapter 10.04.040 of the city code entitled Enforcement Officers is changed as follows, and I am going to read it as it will be after changed. "It shall be the duty of authorized employees of the Salisbury Police Department, Housing and Community Development Department, Salisbury Fire Department, Department of Field Operations, or any other department of the City of Salisbury as authorized by the Chief of Police, who shall be referred to as, quote, 'enforcement officer,' end quote, in this subchapter." That's the language being added to subsection A. The changes to subsection B will read as follows. "In the case of a parking violation, an enforcement officer making such a report shall also attach to such vehicle or deliver to the operator thereof if present in the vehicle a notice to the owner or operator thereof that such vehicle has been illegally parked, and instructing such owner or operator where and when he may make payment of the penalty for such violation and the amount of the penalty for such violation. In case of any other violations, each enforcement officer making such a report shall deliver to the operator or driver of such a vehicle a notice that such vehicle has been operated or driven in violation of this chapter, and instructing such operator or driver to appear at the district court for the county at the time and on the date specified in such notice and in regard, and in regard to such violation."
All those in favor of ordinance number 2895, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing unopposed, the chair, hearing unopposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2896 for first reading.
So moved. Second.
Last but not least, ordinance number 2896, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to approve a budget amendment of the FY 25 general fund budget to appropriate funds received from the Blue Heron Agility Association of Delaware in the amount of $4,000. Whereas by ordinance number 2879, which was passed by City Council on July 22, 2024, and approved by Mayor Randolph J. Taylor on July 24, 2024, the city was to accept a donation in the amount of $3,500 from the Blue Heron Agility Association of Delaware, and that donation was to be used for the purchase of police canine hot and pop system. And whereas by ordinance number 2879, the city's fiscal year 2024 general fund budget was to be amended to increase the general fund revenue donations, other account number 0100-456415 by $3,500, and increase Police Department Animal Supplies account number 21021546010 by that same amount, which is $3,500. And whereas because ordinance number 2879 was passed and approved after July 1 of 2024, the city's fiscal year 2025 general fund budget should have been amended. And whereas since ordinance number 2879 was passed and approved, the city has received a donation from Blue Heron Agility Association of Delaware. And whereas Blue Heron Agility Association of Delaware donated $4,000 to the city, which was $500 more than expected. Whereas Mayor and Counsel now enter into this ordinance to correct the amount of the donation received from Blue Heron Agility Association of Delaware and the fiscal year of the general fund budget to be amended. And whereas as provided in ordinance number 2879, Section 729 of the city charter, excuse me, prohibits the city from entering into agreement that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the council, and the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this aforementioned donation must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of counsel. Section 1 of ordinance 2896 reads, "The City of Salisbury's fiscal year 2025 general fund budget being hereby amended as follows. Increase general fund revenue donations, other account number 01000456415 by 4,000, and B, increase Police Department Animal Supplies account number 21021546010 by $4,000."
All those in favor of ordinance number 2896, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And hearing unopposed, the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Boucher.
You're welcome.
All right, this time we'll move on to our public comments portion of the agenda. Again, each person will have four minutes. Our first representative is Laura Turner, Toner, sorry.
My name's Laura Toner, and I work at the Wycomico Public Library. Yesterday was an incredibly painful day for many in our community. As I was leaving the library building, I noticed an emergency incident occurring across the street. One of our patrons, a young man in his twenties, had been sleeping under the bridge by the Games Park. He had a seizure, and he fell into the water. He drowned. This incident was entirely preventable. Throughout the afternoon yesterday, I witnessed and felt so much heartbreak. I saw this young boy almost daily in the library. His potential was limitless. He deserved the chance to see his future. I hope we can prevent an incident like this from happening again. I urge the city council to pursue the installation of guardrails that we have had previously or another barrier system by the Riverwalk. Something that may seem so small could have such a great impact on the safety of our community. It could save lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Taylor?
Good evening, Robert Taylor, Salisbury resident. Couple things. Ordinance number 2893, that's the one about the new fees. The only concern I have on that is regarding the city park. If that's going to be leased out, I would point out that that is a big attraction of people to the city, from outside of the city, to get to know the city. We had relatives in Delaware when their children were young. They frequently came to the zoo and visited. And of course, many people here in the city go there, particularly with young children. If it's going to be leased out, that means I think it's going to be closed at those periods of time. And I'm really wondering if that's good policy. I'm just asking the question. I'm not arguing about the amount of the fee or anything, but just the idea of closing off what is a real attraction. We don't have the Ward Museum anymore. This is probably our biggest attraction. But turning to something more important, the Greater Salisbury Committee has come out with during the past week, a housing study. And in my opinion, it's really not worth the paper it's written on. Just to summarize, I've only got four minutes. They have a lot of data from construction in Sussex and Kent County in Delaware, and are saying, well, we should be like that. They do have a lot of construction going on, and have for years in Sussex and Kent. We have not had as much. The report doesn't analyze what the difference is between here and there. One is very obvious, it's a different state, and there are a lot of differences between Maryland and Delaware that attract people. Delaware is one of the fastest-growing states in the country. It also has, in Sussex County, 20 miles of ocean and bay frontage. In Kent County, they have the state Capitol in Dover, they've got the big Air Force Base there, and in the northern part of the county, they're within spitting distance of the Wilmington metropolitan area. So they have a lot of things that we just simply don't have. And as I say, the report doesn't analyze why there's a difference. It just says, well, we ought to throw a lot of money at developers, give them more subsidies. And that is really absurd. Let's look at what the differences are and see if we can surmount them, or if we can't, go to Plan B. And Plan B is not to throw a lot of money at developers. And I would point out, just on that note, we really need as much revenue as we can get. Tonight, you just approved a ward of bids, about $1 million for this year. Now, I think the unassigned fund balance in our last financials, which are now over a year out of date, we still don't have the ones for the last fiscal year that ended three months ago. The unassigned was about $12 million. Well, one twelfth of that, you've appropriated tonight. Now, I understand there were probably appropriations in the budget for it, but I'm just putting in perspective. That was really our reserve account, $12 million, and we've spent one. And in the last 10 or 12 years, we've had 26% tax rate increase, just in that period of time, primarily under Jake Day. And we can't sustain this. We are in an unsustainable situation, and we have to stop giving money away to projects like the Ross that don't do anything for affordable housing, and the apartments that they want to build down on the lots that were sold for peanuts, or this hotel that the Simpson Group also wants to build. We got to stop doing that, because we need the money. And if nothing else, take the money and use it for affordable housing. Thank you. Good night.
Kristy Richardson?
I live in Salisbury, I work at the library. But I'm just echoing off of what Laura said. Yesterday, a young man who was experiencing homelessness experienced a medical emergency and subsequently fell into the river and drowned. We were there to see the trauma and the fear experienced by those who loved him and those who tried desperately to save him. I hugged them and listened to them cry and expressed how helpless they felt watching the events transpire. And I will not get the image of his body being removed from the water and the collective gasp from everyone when they saw this happen. There should be no reason that a young man who was not feeling well used the concrete of the bridge as a place to rest. It cost him his life. I just want internal biases held to look past when we consider the homeless population. They have hard, complicated stories that don't seem like things that we can fix all at once, but they're not less worthy of protection. As an immediate solution, some sort of barrier between the bridge and the water would prevent this tragedy from transpiring again, because there's nowhere else for them to sleep right now. As a long-term solution, the premise of Ann Street Village was a low-barrier shelter as by HUD definition. It was going to be, you know, housing that would allow them to live in transitional housing for two years and then live in a more supportive solution. But we don't even have the supportive solutions following because there's the housing crisis. So I guess I just am looking for solutions and for people to know what's going on out there, because it's really tragic. And he's not the only person who has passed away in recent days out by the Games Park. But thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Kristy. Holly Worthington?
I'm probably going to sound like a broken record, but I'm going to say the same thing I say pretty much every time I come here. My name is Holly Worthington. I am the broker at Worthington Realty Group in 300 West Main Street, which is adjacent to the parking lots that are set up to potentially be developed. My building- My building holds no off-street parking. I have seven tenants that live above, one of which has lived there, I think, 13 years. She's an older lady. She's having a lot of difficulty already walking multi-blocks to get to where she lives, in addition to, you know, the people that come into the opportunity shop and people that come into my business as well. I hope that when it comes across your desk again, you will understand that, you know, yes, it's great to have development. You know, as a realtor, I do believe that as well, but we have to look at the whole picture of what this project's going to do and the parking shortage that we're going to have. I have been through the zoning board of appeals where it was denied. I've been to two court hearings in the circuit court, all of which I'm funding out of pocket. It's tens of thousands of dollars I've now spent because I believe in this and also because I don't want to see my investment that I've worked many, many years to, you know, acquire, be devalued because of this and also the people that are going to be affected by it. So I hope you look at all the other projects going on because, again, the amphitheater coming, the Folk Festival, other things that are downtown, you know, all these development projects are going to leave us with a shortage. So I hope you understand. Thank you.
Nathan Cox?
And I want to say I firmly agree with everyone who's spoken now. I was going to say something at one point about the guardrails. I'm like, are we taking the guardrails away so we can drown people? I'm not sure what's going on there. I am glad that people's actually said that they didn't come back. But that's not why I'm here. I'm just here to make anyone who is public, hear my public comment, private comments become public about the Salisbury University library situation going on. It is set in stone. There has been a huge hearing that happened in May that had completely relevant to that. But what I'm getting at is, all I want to say right now is to make it known to anyone who doesn't know, that hears now, because I know sometimes people will think something's under wraps and then now that something massive has happened and now we're going to call it uproar. That's what happened with the parking lot like a few years ago because no one said anything. But then the city council said, no, we said something eight years ago. Well, now Salisbury University bought out Wycomico Library and Wycomico Library is going to be moved into the former Ward Museum. Salisbury University is going to be destroying the current building sometime in the next two years, like a building of 1,000-seat amphitheater there is right here, so on and so forth. And I stand with, I know both sides of the story for the most part as a second-hand person at Salisbury University, at the Fulton, part of Salisbury University specifically, and as a constant average library goer, I, seeing both sides, I am very for the move for the library's perspective now because of what they need and what Wycomico can and ever give them. But I cannot see Salisbury University's standpoint because they have a very, very, very low demand in performing arts. As someone who went back and forth in the box office, next to the box office twice a week last semester, I have no clue what was produced last semester. Now, community players, I can tell you. So just wanted to make a little bear, I guess, to anyone who doesn't know about that situation. My biggest issue with it is, and the biggest reason I brought up the whole public hearing that happened in May was, it was a large public hearing about question, it was now Question A, that people spoke up for at least an hour. And to me, my biggest question was, is why does the public not have a say about what happens to the public library, good or bad? You know, maybe, and maybe everyone would love it or want to move. I don't know. But I feel as if since it's a public institution, I think the public should have had a say. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Nathan.
No pun intended.
All right, seeing no other public comments? No? Okay, all right. So we'll move forward to administration updates and comments. Senator Kittrick?
Yeah, just have a couple of things real quick. We do feel for the people who were involved with the drowning this weekend. Thank you to our first responders who got there as fast as possible and got in the water, but we were too late. We do agree we can do more to better serve our housing insecure folks and look at all opportunities to protect people on the Riverwalk. So we'll have continued conversations. But again, thank you for those who are involved in helping with that effort, but we did get there a little too late and hopefully we can prevent that in the future. Earlier this evening, there was an open house at Detroit Community Center. We are, you know, going across the finish line with our expansion plan there. The open house was hosted by the Boys and Girls Club of America. We had people who were there. We were really excited about that being opened up to the individuals' part of that program and then, you know, additional hours, but it's a long time coming. I know we had some other people who were there, so you may want to comment on in a few minutes. Won't steal your thunder. Events, third Friday, this Friday, superheroes, come on out, dress up. And then our second round of Halloween happenings is happening on Saturday. We're very successful this past weekend, so we're looking forward to hosting families and kids again this weekend. Busy month, got a lot more coming on at the zoo, including a new event. Still looking to sell some tickets for the event in November. So stay tuned to learn more about that, but it's called Wild Vibes. It is a fundraiser that will include beer and wine and live entertainment and music and just kind of an intimate setting in the zoo. So looking forward to having that fundraiser there. It's a brand-new event. Mayor?
Yeah, just want to comment just on Truitt Street. Anybody that hasn't been aware of that project has taken us a long time to get to the finish line and we glad we're there. But I want a special shout out to Rachel Manning, Tommy Wilkinson, George Wilkerson and Tommy Stevenson. They pulled it at the end. And last Monday to this Monday was a Herculean change and we appreciate their efforts and extra hours. So also want to comment on Isabella Street. We had a washout there, sort of an unknown. And I want to thank Nick Voltek and the Field Ops folks for bringing that back online quickly and I think in a decent number, which was great. And the last thing I was going to do on third Friday is I'm going to be a part of, as is President Dowdy, women supporting women. So you have the opportunity to throw a pie in the face of the mayor and the president of the council for a small fee of $5. So you're welcome to come out.
Max 10 pies. Max.
Only $5?
I got to put a cap somewhere. Yeah, we need to up that price. It's not inflation prices. Thank you all for that. Move forward to council comments. So we'll start with you, Councilwoman Jackson.
Just a constant reminder of what COVID, for one, it is still out about. And I know many of people who have had it still continue to be safe with COVID. It's not what I have. I'm under the weather again a little, but I don't have COVID. But I'm just saying, there are so many people who do have and have contracted COVID. So just be safe. If you have to wear your mask, social distance still, that's what we have to do. I think we forgot about COVID, but COVID is real. I'd like to talk about some events that will be going on in our community. We'll have a trunk and treat at the Wycomico Memorial via WFW 10159 on October the 29th. It's from 6 to 8. Please bring your kids, families come out with your children. We're looking to have a great time. Everything is free. We're going to have hayrides and everything. So we have music, we have games, we have so much fun. Last year, like I said, we had a phenomenal time last year and we're looking to have an even better time this year. Place is very well decorated inside and out. Last year, we couldn't be outside because of the inclement weather, but we're looking to have a great time again. So come out and support. This event is sponsored by the FFW and Salisbury Advisory Council on Youth Activities. And in December, Salisbury Advisory always and other organizations always get together and put on an event in December for our senior citizens, 60-plus. And it's a free event for everybody and it's a senior Christmas dinner and gift giveaway. We're looking for donations of any kind. We feed them, we entertain them, we just have a good time fellowshipping together and just watching the smiles on their face, knowing that somebody cares for them because Christmas time is a very sad time for a lot of seniors who don't have family members and people to visit them. So this is why we do this. So if you're able to contribute or donate anything to our organization, please contact me via Facebook or my number is 410-726-8478. Please support us. Please support our city, our county and our state. You know, just, you know, we try to do things I do. I try to do as much as I can as possible in our community and it just is not for our community. It's for the whole entire surrounding area. So I don't exclude it just to District 1. It encompasses a multitude of areas. So please come out and support us, have fun and be entertained. Make sure they wear their costumes. If they don't, still come. Doesn't matter. We do understand that some people cannot afford it and we just want to have fun with the families. So I'd like to thank you for being at the meeting tonight and all who spoke in the public comments and to the young ladies that spoke about the young man who drowned. I always felt the same way about railing some kind of protection. I'm very adamant about water. I love water to a certain extent, but it's a fear factor for those who can't swim. So I can swim, but it's just a fear factor. And even if you can swim, you can still drown. So thank you tonight and have a good evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Councilwoman DeShiel?
Okay, I have a request for everyone to go online, go to YouTube, and I want you to watch PAC 14's Year in Review. I was absolutely blown away. I had no idea PAC 14 does as much as they do. They're actually in the back taking care of us tonight as well. So also put on your calendar, January 25th, from 5 to 8 at the Garry Academic Commons. PAC 14 will be celebrating 25 years. So it's an awesome, it's a little gem around here that we need to remember to support. SU had a groundbreaking last week, yes, that we attended, a bunch of us attended. And the Blackwell Building that used to be known as the library is now going to be a state-of-the-art, all-inclusive environment for new students to just about get anything they need and get help and support, which is needed when, particularly, I think, when these young freshmen come in. The airport also had a groundbreaking and they were, they're extending a runway. Just so that you know, it will allow larger planes to come in, the heavier planes that are not able to use the runways currently. And with that in mind, you will be able to have more passengers. And at the meeting today, the Airport Commission, they are really happy to announce that passenger traveling, passengers traveling was up 10% in August. So that's a, you know, good win for all of us in the county as well as the other counties that use it. And the Aviation Maintenance Tech School, if you get a chance to look at that, it's really cool. And they have turned a hangar into a school and the gentleman Chris, Chris, I believe, who they have brought up to help do the trainings, has organized it all and it's just a, really a nice oiled machine. They're hoping to have 25 students in January for the spring semester in collaboration with UMES. The issue is getting certification and government does not always move quickly. So, thank you. That's what I have. I'm looking forward to the zoo event. I have two, I have an eight and a 10-year-old I'm taking Saturday and asking us to dress up as well. So I have to get out my butterfly costume, I guess.
Thank you, Councilwoman DeShiel. Council Vice President?
Well, everyone has announced so many things that I was going to think had on my list. So anyway, I would like to add, Mr. Kittrick, by any chance, sometime within a week, could somebody go out and look at that fencing option around that area just this week? I really would like to have it addressed. I mean, throughout the years, we kind of talked about it here and there, but I really think it's time, within a week, we should have, look at it and come back with some options on what we could do around there. So the only other thing I have to say is, which I usually do, especially because of the hurricane and the devastation in Florida, blood supply around the country is in dire need. Please donate blood and consider being an organ donator. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Yeah, I do, I remember when the Riverwalk was being repaired and I remember asking, I believe it was Mayor Day and someone else, I said, you know, why are we not? And I think there were some insurance said, you know, yea or nay or to that. So, but I think it's time for us to, you know, revisit and at least have that conversation. So thank you all for bringing that more to our attention. And I was just speaking today at the Truitt Street Ribbon Cutting is that, you know, normally in the community and government, we're reactionary. So usually there's a problem, we think of a solution. And I want us to really start to transition more into, you know, not just responding to problems, but anticipating them. And so this is one of those things. And I promise I'll end on a better note, but on my way home from work, going to the Truitt Street groundbreaking, unfortunately, on Old Ultra City Road, there was a pedestrian that was struck by a vehicle. In moments just before that, there was a bicyclist. There was no bike lane. There's just a small area, a small shoulder about a foot wide. And I had just thought to myself, as I swerved over the double yellow line to avoid that bicyclist, and I just thought to myself, man, it's really dangerous. And just not a quarter mile down, traffic was stopped and there was a person laying on the ground. Thankfully, he was, he was very badly injured and the person who unfortunately struck that individual was shaken up. And I, you know, of course, there was a lot going on. I just made sure everything was okay. I didn't want to cause disruption. But I say that to say, I know that there's a lot of buzz going around with, you know, the bike lanes and this, that, the third, but when it all gets said and done, what is the value of a life? And we have to do things that are right. And so consistently, we hear complaints, we hear this, but I will tell you, along Old Ultra City Road, I go in and out of the city limits, and there are children that walk that route from East Salisbury. And I don't know what I would do if that was a child that lost their life. So before anyone opens their mouth, I urge you to think clearly when we joke about bike lanes and those things, but that was someone's life, that that was their transportation and mode of transportation from to and fro. So that's what we have to think about when we make these decisions. And I just urge us to go a little bit beyond ourselves and to think beyond our own scope because that really set the perspective of what my role is here and to, again, not be so reactionary to see that person laying there today. I'm still shaking thinking about it. And that's really why I was shaking earlier when I was, when I was giving that speech, but I just had to mask it as saying that I was shaking for being, and I was excited for the Truitt Street Center, but that's why, because moments before that, I saw someone who just nearly lost their life and we have the power to transform that. And while that may not be important to you, but to someone else, that is a way to get from their home to their job safely. So I'll end on that note. Yes, this third Friday, you have the opportunity to pie the mayor and I and Derek Jarman from the economic, you know, from our business department. And again, I'm working on saying no. And I got the email and quickly said yes and didn't know what I was signing up for. So again, please be gentle and you can just make a monetary donation to Women Supporting Women and remind yourselves that Monday is my birthday and I'll probably be getting my hair done Friday or Saturday. So just remind yourselves, it's sticking a while to get this hair looking like it's looking, it looks, so. And whipped cream does not come out of your hair. So I'm just...
I was going to do it, but I have a class reunion.
Oh, my goodness.
I don't have as much to hang on.
Yeah, get the bear. He just has to, quick rinse will get him. But anyway, thank you all for coming and for giving your public comments. We'll see you next week. Again, reminder that it's, we have a work session and special session because the 28th, we do not have a meeting. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
All right. Meeting's now adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.